Thank you, please be seated. The, uh, the blue booklet that you were given includes two loose-leaf pieces of paper. One in the corner says seven percent version and the other one says 12% version. You can discard the seven percent version, we're not using that tonight. The 12% version, it includes a number of changes that are going to be made to individual articles throughout the night. There was just a last-minute change in what some people's raises were going to be. So that affects various line items and various things. So that's what that's about. When you want to make a motion, when you want to speak, if you have a point of order, anything like that, you raise your hand and I recognize you. And you come up to the microphone and you address your comments to me. There's going to be a strong urge to turn around and look at all those people who are behind you, but that's not really what you're supposed to do. Microphone is facing this way, that way, if I need to cut you off or give you a signal, you can see me to do that. So you'll identify yourself by name and tell us what street you live on. And then you say your piece. If anybody ever is confused about what's going on, or you, you just don't understand what we're voting on, or you don't understand if something is appropriate, or whatever, it's perfectly fine, raise your hand. Don't yell, just raise your hand, wait to be recognized, and then you can ask a point of order, a point of personal privilege, and, and ask me the question, and I'll see if I can get it answered. We start with three moderators' motions. They're in the first page of the booklet. And I just ask for unanimous consent that the meeting dispenses with the reading of the warrant, the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator may not be required to read warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them by their number and/or subject matter. Second, that the moderator may extend the Florida town management, staff, and other non-voters, provided that they must first be recognized by the moderator. And third, that the moderator pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, be allowed to declare a two-thirds vote rather than having to take a standing count. So hearing no objections to those, there's unanimous consent to those moderators' motions. If you haven't been to a town meeting in a while, we started a few years ago using a thing called a consent agenda. There's a bunch of articles on the warrant that we have every year, and they pretty much, nobody has any questions, and we just vote on them, and it's unanimous, and it just kind of goes ahead. So what a consent agenda allows us to do is to take a number of those things, deal with them all upfront, take them out of the list, and then we can focus on the things where people actually have debate. But I'm not taking away your ability to talk about any of these articles. So what'll happen is, I'll say, for example, that Article 1 be added to the consent agenda, and if somebody really wants to talk about choosing people who weren't voted for, and so on and so forth, you would say, "Hold." So let's, let's practice. So I'm gonna, Article 1. Hold, sorry. So we see, we hold on that one, we take it off the consent agenda and move on to the next one, alright? So this is, now we're gonna do it for real, you can hold or not. So, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to choose all other officers, agents, and committees not elected by ballot or appointed, or take any other action relative thereto. There are no appointments to be made, so it would be a, a motion to pass over, Article 1. Article 2, I'm just gonna read the motions now, is a motion that the town accept written reports with the town departments for the calendar year, year 2023. So that will be put on the consent agenda. Article 3, it's a motion that we pass over Article 3, which is bills of payment, uh, paying bills from the prior fiscal year, because there aren't any. That goes on the consent agenda. Article 4 is a motion to pass over budget transfers for fiscal year 2024, because there aren't any. And then skipping way ahead, because there's interesting things that we do want to talk about, but skipping way ahead, we get to Article 10. Give you a second to find it. So Article 10 is about revolving funds. It sets up a whole bunch of funds that town departments and, and organizations take in, and then they, they take in fees and whatnot, and then they can use that money against their budget, and we just have to approve these caps on how much can go into those funds every year. There's a long list of them, they're relatively unchanged. That would go on the consent agenda, nobody needs to talk about that. Article 11 is a Chapter 90 grant. That's a motion that the town accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislature and approved by the Mass. Department of Transportation Highway Division under the so-called Chapter 90 Highway Assistance Program for the period from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant. So that goes on the consent agenda. Then we can skip ahead to Article 16. 16 is a motion that the town approve the sum of $25,225.25 from the water and sewer enterprise fund retained earnings account as follows for the purpose of funding and implementing the first-year cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Teamsters Union Local 170, which is $18,179.75 from sewer retained earnings, and $7,020.50 from water retained earnings. So that motion would go in the consent agenda. Then Article 17 is a motion that the town authorize the board of assessors to appoint one of its members to a paid part-time position under their supervision, as allowed under Mass. General Law, Section, Chapter 268A, Section 21A, and to fix the compensation of such an employee to an hourly rate of $24 to $25 per hour. Will go on the consent agenda. And finally, Article 19, skip forward just a couple pages, is a motion that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,200 to pay the costs associated with the annual assessors recertification of properties, special appraisal expenses, cyclical reinspection, and annual interim adjustments, and anything incidental or related thereto. So the motion is that that collection of articles, 1, 2, 3, 4, 10, 11, 16, 17, and 19, be added to a consent agenda and voted on as a group with no discussion. Do I have a second on that motion? I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you. Now I'm gonna model good behavior. After you make a motion and it gets approved, you sign it and you give it to Ellen. Okay, we're gonna start in on Article 5. You can, you can just, I think everyone's comfortable, we can assume everyone in the room can read the sheet, so she doesn't actually need to read all the details, and she can refer to things on the sheet in her motion. I don't hear any objection to that, so yeah, you can make your motion that way. I do need you to step to the microphone, identify yourself, and face the moderator.
Maureen Marshall, 840 Pleasant Street. Am I not close enough? Article 5. Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate the sum of $678,435 for the Water Enterprise Fund for the operations and maintenance of the municipal water system for fiscal year 2025 to be funding, funded from the following sources. That information specifically is provided for you on your worksheet in the FY 25 budget documents that you've received.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Usually Kathy Emin is here, and she yells "second" very loudly, and I, I'm missing her. So I need to hear your seconds, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this article? Now, this is one of the ones that was adjusted, right? So if you want to look at the sheet that came... On the front of the sheet... Yeah, there's just a bunch of changes to the numbers. On the back of the sheet, there's more specifics. So it says Article 5, instead of 674,000, it's 678,000. Instead of 136, it's 141. So as I said, I think what happened is that the budget was written assuming these people were getting a 2.5% increase, and a couple of people instead are going to get a 12% increase, so they have to move the money around. So any questions about Article 5? Yes, Sam?
I'm, I'm hoping that, otherwise, Sam Lipsen, West Street, Barry, Mass. So this is related to the 12% increase, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I listened to all the discussions with the selectmen and the, and the Finance Committee, and in an effort of fairness, I would make a motion to, to support this 12%. However, the other non-union employees that work in the town of Barry, they would also, if they haven't gotten a previous increase other than the 2.5%, that they all should be brought along so that all of them receive the 12% increase. Now, people may ask, "Where's the money coming from?" Well, we'll just have to look through the list and see what we can shave off.
So unfortunately, Sam, there's this principle in, in town meetings that the emotion or amendment, which is what you would actually be making here, has to be germane to the specific subject matter of this article, which is only about the sewer and water enterprise budget. Everybody else's salary is going to be dealt with in a couple articles from now, in Article 7, when we do the omnibus budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any motion about individual salaries for individual employees would be germane in that, but not in this one.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on Article 5? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Article 6, the sewer enterprise budget.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate the sum of $918,290 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the operation and maintenance of the municipal sewer system for fiscal 2025 to be funded from the sources that are outlined on your sheet.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. This is another one that was affected by the change of those salaries, so if you look at the back of the sheet, under Article 6, you can see the changes, the 913 becoming 918, and then a number of different sources changing up in, in amount. Is there any discussion of Article 6? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Article 6, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Article 7, the omnibus budget.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officials in the town of Barry for fiscal 2025, for the period of July 12, like, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,629... No, I'm sorry, $6,629,784, and transfer the sum of $520,000 of ambulance receipts reserved as the total of $7,149,784.13 identified in the town's omnibus budget.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. I'll point out that Article 7 is also affected by that change of salary, so if you look at the, uh, back of that sheet, legal went down, and town roads and highway went down, so that's where the money to pay for some of this is coming from, is some of those things. So, um, I will now entertain motions, I mean, discussion. Go ahead.
As I said previously, my name is Sam Lipsen from West Street, is that there's been some increases in compensation, and I'm recommending that, I, I can see from the omnibus budget that many people have received significant raises, and, but I'm talking about the people who have only received for years and years and years of minimum raises, and currently, probably it's in the area of 2.5%, and I'm asking the, the, the town administrator to be able to calculate all the numbers, but I'm asking the town to approve that all of those folks to be administered correctly at a later date, that they be, they, their compensation be increased 12%, just like those folks have been increased at the DPW, 12%. Thank you.
So if that were made as a motion, I would have to rule it out of order for being nonspecific, because unfortunately, we have to vote in an exact budget, and any amendment to an amount would need to include exact amounts. So I would need to know specifically how you wanted to change every line of the budget to make that money available to those employees.
Well, do we need to recess this meeting so you and I can sit down and figure out all the numbers? We can't do it unmasked at this point, just to be, just as a point of order, as a point of information, that we need to respect the employees here in town who do one hell of a job, and it doesn't seem very ethical that one department gets 12% and the other person gets 2.5%. So I don't know how we go about doing it, but you're a smart boy, and I'm sure you can, you could figure it out. Thank you.
Um, there, there's no second on Sam's motion to amend, which I also still find out of order. So we'll move on to more discussion.
Mr. Moderator, Dan Druel, Woods Road. I'd just like to comment on Mr. Lipsen's comments here, in terms of what the Finance Committee has done, a town administrator, the Select Board has done over the past few years in terms of compensation raises across all of the associates within the town, and I do agree with Sam that everyone that works for the town does a commendable job, and they do deserve a respectable wage. The income coming into town doesn't always match our expenses, so we've been in a couple year strategy where certain departments have seen an increase above and beyond the 2.5%. And that's what we're seeing this year with a few positions. We saw it last year at town meeting with changing our compensation to some of the folks that worked in the library, the town administrator. So this is a longer-running process, and I just wanted to make those comments to the town here today.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Article 7, the omnibus budget? Seeing none, we can move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the omnibus budget, as printed in the booklet with those changes from that addendum for the 12% increase, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion carries. This brings us to Article 8.
Article 8, Mr. Moderator, I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of $7,278,176 to pay for the schools as identified in the town's FY 2025 recommended omnibus budget relative to education as follows for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2024. That would be the Quabbin Regional School District, $6,823,313. Monti Tech, $372,782. And Quabbin Regional School District Debt Service, $82,080, for a grand total of $7,278,176.
I have a motion, is there a second?
No second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about Article 8, the schools? Yes, please step to the microphone.
My name is Candace Miracle, I live on Old Hardwick Road. I want to know, has the population of students changed that we're paying for? Is, are there more students, less students, the same number of students?
I'll see if I can get that answered for you. Would recognize this, oh! I'd, I'd recognize Mr. Brophy or the superintendent, whoever. So the superintendent is, uh, not a resident of Barry, she's a guest, but under those moderators' motions, you gave me permission to recognize her even though she's not a voter here, so we'll see if we can get the answer from the superintendent.
Mr. Moderator, Kali Muhar, Quabbin Regional School District. So we have seen a decrease in our student population in Barry. I'm just, Cheryl's gonna get us the exact number, so I don't misspeak. We've had a decrease of 14 students this year.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Article 8? Yeah, you have a follow-up question?
Just for the record, I'm a teacher. I'm wondering why the budget has increased so much when our student population has decreased. So it doesn't make sense to me that if our student population has decreased, why we're having to spend more money to go to the school district?
Is there anyone from the school committee who wants to talk to that?
Mark Brophy, 90 Ruggles Lane. In regards to our budget, the Quabbin Regional School budget has, went up overall 2.89% from last year. The cost of our expenditures in regards to transportation, retirement obligations, contractual obligations with the six bargaining units, which was really a 3% raise, uh, that was bargained for the, for the, the, uh, work staff. But overall, we've had a decrease of funds on the state level, which then puts more emphasis on the budget for programming and educating students throughout the district, and puts more emphasis on the towns. We have been trying, hurling with not only superintendents, but with associations and school committees, to have funding formulas fixed. So yes, there is a decrease of students, there is a funding mechanism that we only got $110,000 from Chapter 70, uh, funds for education. And so aside from transportation and other obligations with oil and everything else, we kept a very, very responsible fiscal budget for all five towns, and four out of the five towns have approved the budget, which by law, under the law for regional school districts, is a percentage. So we do have a budget, but we do have to vote at a town meeting the particular numbers and, um, if anybody had any questions regarding the budget. But to answer that as quickly as I could, and I know I try to, I know I can be wordy, but there's the reality, the reality, it, it's based on population and apportionment, our budget is. Not only do we have Chapter 70 from the state, and the amount of money that our superintendent and the staff can help with grants will offset the budget anywhere and everywhere to lower the assessments to towns. But overall, we have since from FY 18, our budget went up 1.8%. FY 19, 2%. FY 20, 1.9%. FY 21, .5%. FY 22, 1.7%. FY 23, 2%. FY 24, 6%. Last year was, it did, and thank you, the town of Barry and all our towns that supported the budget to have it, coming out of COVID and everything else. And lastly, this year, our budget went up for operating expenses for 2.89%. And as you know, Mr. Moderator, the apportionment and the assessments to towns, and the committee, the 15-member board committee with the superintendent's staff continuously to cut and to lower as best as we can for good programming for what we have in the Quabbin Regional School District.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 8?
Hi, I'm Dylan Bowles, I live on Williamsville Road. I just wanted to make a comment about this discussion, they, talking about the school budget. I did attend Quabbin, and when I attended, we don't need to talk about how many years ago I attended Quabbin, um, there was a really, really rigorous music program. The music program, the theater program was really well-funded. A lot of students attended Quabbin, we had, the halls were full. Now I have children that are attending Quabbin Regional Middle High School, the, the hallways are not as full. A lot of families that would otherwise have moved to Barry, or OCAM, or, or any of the other Quabbin District towns chose not to, because we have underfunded our schools for years. So if you want to complain about paying too much money because we've 14 students less this year than last year, maybe we should bring back the actual funding for the music programs, for the extracurricular activities that used to be funded by this town.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 8? Okay, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion carries. We move to Article 9. And you'll note that this is going to be read slightly differently than is written in the book, so pay attention.
John Dixon, Worcester Road. Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $110,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to operate the Public Educational and Governmental, PEG, Access and Cable Related Funds for fiscal year 25, to install equipment on the third floor of the Henry Woods Building to record public meetings and anything incidental or related thereto.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This one, the Finance Committee deferred their recommendation. Does the Finance Committee...
Mr. Moderator, are you favorable?
The Finance Committee indicates that they're favorable to this. So is there any discussion on Article 9? Seeing none, we can go to a, a vote, simple majority is required. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. I did hear, I'm not gonna assume it was a child's voice, maybe it was a, an adult with a very childlike voice, but I'd remind any children in the audience, you're not registered voters... voters in the town of Barry, I'm not going to let, make you sit up front, you can stay with your mom and dad, but please don't vote. Thank you. We dispense with Articles 10 and 11, so we're moving on to Article 12 regarding a local option meals tax.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2, so as to impose a local sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town by a vendor at a rate of 0.75% of the gross receipts of the vendor from the sale of restaurant meals.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Article 12? Yes, sir, please.
Phil Stevens from Carter Stevens Farm, Old Stage Road. I view this new Barry tax as a personal attack on our farm-to-table restaurant and the other 11 family-owned restaurants in Barry. It is ridiculous to think that we're going to be taxing an ice cream cone in Barry. When the state creates a tax, when the feds create a tax, there's not much we can do about it. But today, tonight, we can end this tax with a vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 12? I'm going to recognize the man in the bright shirt, yep.
Thank you very much. So my name's David Pascali, I live on Wawonet Road, and I just got a couple of comments regarding this extra tax for the, when you go out to eat. I don't know if you folks have noticed, or the people who recommended this tax, but restaurants are having a hard time staying open. You got way more cost to bring the food into the restaurants, all the cost is being passed on to the customers, where people are struggling, one of the few joys people and families in Barry have is going out to eat. What this is going to do now is make it more expensive for them. I understand that the funds want to be used for something else, I don't exactly know what they're for, but to me, it's irrelevant. The taxpayers of this town don't need another tax under any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, yes, applause really isn't have a place in town meetings. So if you approve of what he said, you can get up and agree with him, if you disapprove, but we don't need to have a lot of noise.
I just wanted to clarify why the Select Board initiated this particular discussion. There's no question that what Mr. Pascali said is, you know, a truism, there's no way around that. The concern that we have, obviously, is this is a way in which the consumer who might come to our community and purchase something that is, okay, subject to the meals tax, would be paying, if they spent $100 at a wonderful meal for their four-person family, they would be paying 75 cents additional. The restaurants do not have to do a lot of paperwork for this, it's just part of, instead of just being six cents, 6.25 cents, it'll now be seven cents, that would go to the Department of Revenue, then they would divvy up that meals tax to the locals. I agree with you that it is in some ways a tax on the local person who eats in the local communities, but it's also an opportunity for the many people who may come to our communities to, you know, provide a small bit of revenue to the community for some of the works that we need to do. I have no problem if you choose to vote against this, but we felt it's our job, our obligation, to look at any different option that we might have to take some burden off of the person who has paying local taxes for their homes. So vote it down if you must, think about it if you would, table it and maybe think about it more so next time we can go at this again for a conversation. There are about 190 different cities and towns in the Commonwealth who have this local option tax. It has been very beneficial to them financially, even the small town, for example, of Warren, okay, accrues $24,000 a year in this particular option, tax option. We bring it to you for your, you know, interest, for your hopeful, your serious consideration. We knew this would be somewhat controversial. Our effort is only to say, this is a mechanism that we can take some burden off of the real estate tax, not a lot, not a big burden, but some. So that is certainly subject to your, you know, deliberations and vote this evening, and we felt it's our obligation, responsibility to bring this information forward, regardless of how it ends up.
Thank you. Any other discussion, the woman, yes? Okay, sure.
Cheryl Southwick, Wellwinnet Road. I know we need money, I know we're broke, but things start small like this, taxes have a way of growing, just look at your electric bill, that list of fees and how that has grown, all the permits and everything, so this is what makes it difficult to make a decision on something like this. Yes, right now, it's minimal, but where is it going, you know, in the future? So that's my concern.
Now, recognize you?
Candace Miracle again. I have two problems with this. One, the majority of the restaurants that are in our community are frequented by our community, with the exception of maybe Stone Cow. But the bottom line is that now these guys that have all these businesses, it isn't just as simple as writing a check, they're either going to have to pass it off to the customer in an increase in prices, which means menu changes and everything else. So I really think that this is not the time for this, because the bottom line is, it may, you know, take care of some of our property taxes, but it's us that's going to be doing it anyway.
Thank you. Just so everyone understands, this is a change to an existing tax that they're already collecting. So instead of collecting six and a quarter, they'd be collecting seven, so it wouldn't affect their menu prices, but it would affect the final tap. Mr. Urban?
Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. I think one of the things we don't recognize most often when we start making changes to rules is, I guess simply put, how many straws does it take to break the camel's back? And it may just seem like a little straw, minor little thing, to the impact of different businesses and how they manage things and whether they are using softwares or hand accounting or whatever they're doing, it's, I just got a feeling that when the state's already talking about raising the sales tax, that same 6.25, and then we're going to add in our .75, and then all of a sudden it ends up being 7.5 by the time it's all done, it just adds up. And I think that's the piece we need to just pay attention to, is this is just another straw, and eventually, you're going to break some backs, and we just need to pay attention to that.
The man right here, yep.
Hello, Jesse Warren, Gilbert Road. I'm just looking to clarify a couple of things. The first one would be, I see that the language says that it refers to this tax applying to restaurant meals, so I'm assuming there's a difference between what constitutes a restaurant meal that this could be applicable to, as opposed to something like a bottle of water or an ice cream cone or single items? So I don't think it would apply universally, is that correct to say?
I'll get the answer to that question for you.
Basically, if there is a product that you are, that, okay, the restaurant or the store or wherever is paying a meals tax on because the food is being taken and eaten out, it would, it would be, you know, the tax would be affect that particular item. The persons who would know best who's paying meals tax on what, they're already paying it. So if you're paying a meals tax currently, when you take and go to a restaurant or buy a pizza, it's going to, it would be accrued on that. So take a look at your receipts, because obviously, you know, we'll probably talk about this again in the future as things, you know, progress. My guess is, there's a lot of people out there saying, how, is this a good time to do this, should we consider this? But if you are paying a meals tax, it counts. For example, for a while, when somebody brought up this meals tax idea, I said, ah, I get it now. When I buy my Diet Coke, okay, and I buy it in where? It's $1.38. And I kept saying, how come there's $1.38 in where? But if I buy it in Gardner, it's only $1.37, meals tax. Okay, so it's that small an item, and obviously, if I were to go to another restaurant and be spending $200, I'd be spending $1.50 on an extra on this particular option. So you take a look, because I don't, I don't see this, you know, I don't see you all running up here saying, God, this sounds like a great idea, let's do it. So I'm saying, think about, think about it, when you go to a restaurant, when you go to a restaurant, where are you paying this? If you go to Ethel, you're paying it. If you go to where, you're paying it. If you're going to Whister, you're paying it. So you're paying this in a lot of other communities already. I'm not saying it's right for Barry, but it's something to consider as we think about, how can we better fund programs and opportunities for our families, for our children, for our schools, and so forth. It's a small issue, however, it can certainly load up, as Ms. Southwick points out. But if, take a look, what are you buying, and you will see that where you're, you know, where you're paying a meals tax, this tax would apply.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, just a follow-up question, and you might have already kind of addressed it. Is the .75%, is that something that fluctuates, or is that statutory? I believe it's statutory, okay. Yeah, just to make sure that, just to confirm that, that that amount is statutory and isn't going to fluctuate wildly over time. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
There was another one over here, how about in the way back? Yep, hey you.
Hi, Claire Fraser, School Street. I think a lot of people are getting at, you know, the negative impact to local businesses because at the end of the day, it may not be the menu prices, but the cost out of the consumer's pocket is going to be higher. I think you said it, Maureen, is that you notice the price of your Diet Coke in a variant. So my question is, as two other people have alluded to, I understand that it's hypothetical, but do we have any idea where this extra funds would go to, potentially asking if maybe those funds would be delegated to help those local businesses? So where would that funds potentially go to?
So I can answer that partly, this is strictly a motion to raise money, not to appropriate money, so this doesn't say where the money's going. John, you want to expand on that?
So, I got to look at you, right? Yeah, okay. So to answer the question directly, at this point, that money is not specifically appropriate to anything, it is going, it would go to the general fund to try and reduce, you know, the closer we're getting to potentially needing to have an override at some point in the future. The long-term goal would be to get this money and use it towards economic development, but that's not something we can say or promise at this point. The economic development is the goal to get to, and we are pursuing grants in that area right now as an alternative, because we don't have the room and the budget to work directly on economic development. But the economic development side of it is what we want to work towards, to bring more people into town, to give people a reason to come to Barry, to go to those restaurants, aside from what those restaurants already provide on their own.
Thank you. In the back here in the baseball cap, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Robert Kane, 760 Williamsville Road. The Act has done well since it was enacted, to the $258 million, actually, across the state. And all that money has come from families that may or may not be able to, you know, enjoy things like they used to. As Mr. Urban pointed out, there's legislation from Healy's office right now that it's 1%. So we kind of don't know, like he pointed out, where that's going to stop. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Back there, yep? You, just put your hand down.
Janet Thompson, Worcester Road, owner of J. and J. Family Restaurant. I think I kind of agree with Maureen, where we might need to look at this a little longer. My concern, talking about Ethel, Gardner, where they have McDonald's, Taco Bell, they have Friendly's, they have 99, which are big corporate, big draw restaurants that are full, they're paying a lot of money in this meals tax, and we kind of expect to pay that when we go there. I don't know if the few restaurants that are left in Barry right now, are we going to generate enough to even do this? Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize Sam.
Sam, Whipton West Street. I listen to this tax and I understand both sides from everyone, and it's very little money, but for me, it just, the principle for me, that the town is coming in and having their hands out again, and they're just squeezing a little bit more juice from the orange, and I think we should turn it down, and if we want to bring it up another time, maybe we can think of a purpose for some of the money. And as well, and are there anybody here who's a restaurateur, other than this young lady from earlier? I think that this, this process is a cumbersome project, process for the people who own the restaurants, and for such little money, I didn't think it was logical to irritate them because we are pleased that they are here. And I don't know if this is the way to do it, but I guess the question, question is, can I move the question, is that the term that I need?
You could, however, I wouldn't recognize a motion to move the question, because I think debate is not ending on its own anyway, so I don't think we need to vote on whether we want to vote. So I'm not going to recognize a motion.
Thank you.
Of the question. I'm going to recognize one more comment, because John had his hand up, and then we're going to move to a vote anyway.
So I do want to say I appreciate all the input on this, I think this is something that I came into this, you know, not fully certain on yet, I do want to share some facts about this that we've, and some opinions, I should say, as well. The first thing, just so everyone is aware of what the situation is on the page, there are about 250 towns out of the 350 towns in Massachusetts that have this already. Towns as small as Hardwick are doing this already. My estimate from looking at the income from other towns that are about our size and roughly in our area, same, similar number of restaurants, I think we could expect approximately, and I'm trying to stay conservative with this, $60,000 a year for the town, you know, to what end that is. I think from my perspective, the bigger issues are still fiscal responsibility, which is something we're working on, pursuing grant funding, and this is sort of the third prong to that, but it's the least important from my perspective, so I appreciate the comment on this, but I did want to share some of those facts about what we anticipate it could bring in if it passes.
Thank you. I think we're going to move to a vote. I think we're going to move to a vote. So we're voting on the main motion of adding this 0.75% local option meals tax. Everyone understand what we're voting on? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is defeated. We're going to move on to Article 13, which is the purchase of a new cruiser for the police department.
Mark Rehenus, Spring Hill Road. Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $79,000 from the capitalization, uh, capital stabilization fund to purchase and equip a new cruiser for the police department.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of Article 13? The woman in the ball cap.
Kate, Kate Fulton, 280 Town Farm Road. I'm new to town, so I'm sorry if this question has been answered, but I want to know how much is in the capital sta, sta, capital stabilization fund? And how much this would deplete it? I want to know what the fleet, fleet, I'm sorry, I had a stroke, so I don't speak very well.
Take your time.
But I want to know, what, how much is in the stabilization account at the moment? I want to know what's in the fleet of the police department at the moment? What does it consist of? When was the last time we purchased a cruiser? Is this an ongoing thing every year? Or is just something that they need at the moment? Thank you.
Thank you. So I can answer the first question, because it's on the first page of the booklet, which is capitalization currently has $250,481.86. I'd recognize the police chief to answer the other two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Saboran, police chief. We currently have eight police cruisers in our fleet. Of those eight, six are purchased by the town of Barry. Two of them are purchased through the Army Corps of Engineers, through a contract that we have for patrolling the Barry Falls Dam. Out of those six cruisers, we replace one a year, so that we get a, we are on a rotation, where every six years, we get a new cruiser. So this is an annual expense. We have been working to get it in our operating budget, but at, at the moment, it was, it's decided that we should raise and appropriate this year.
Thank you. Just to correct what you just said, not raise and appropriate, this is a transfer from capital stabilization. Any other questions about Article 13? Yes, sir.
I don't, Mike Paulier, Spring Hill Road. I just have a question, I guess, for the chief. So is it just because you like to do every six years? Or, I mean, can we fix this and have it keep going? Or why every six years?
So we've, we've determined that six years is pretty much the lifespan of a police vehicle. A police vehicle's not like your vehicle at home that you use for commuting, and then it goes in the garage overnight. We have two or three cruisers on the road at any one time. They have, they idle an exorbitant amount of time. After six years, all warranties are expired. For instance, we have a cruiser right now that just lost an engine. Luckily, that is under warranty. So as long as we replace them every six years, we can keep them under warranty a reasonable amount of time, and then maintenance costs also are kept at a reasonable level.
There's follow-up? Yep.
Okay, so do you guys, when, some of you turn them in, you get some kind of resale value? So how much of the vehicle we actually, I mean, what's, a new vehicle's not $39,000, I'm assuming?
No, it's much more than that.
The question is, how much does a new vehicle cost?
So a new police cruiser fully outfitted is 79, the new number is 79,000. That's the most updated number. And that includes vehicle purchase, lights, cage. We do transfer any equipment that we can from our older cruisers, so that we don't have to incur additional costs. Honestly, trade-in value on a six-year police cruiser is, you know, you might get $2,500 for it if you're lucky.
Any other questions on Article 13? Comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This only requires a majority vote, even though it's coming from stabilization, because it's coming from capital stabilization, not the general stabilization fund. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed? The motion carries. Article 14, the Ruggles Lane School Improvement Project.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the unused portion of the appropriation made pursuant to Article 15 from the November 26, 2012 special town meeting for the Ruggles Lane School Improvement Project, and to appropriate the balance of $39,064.02 to the principal portion of the debt exclusion payment for the project due in FY 2025.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear of motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Article 14? Mr. Urban?
Can someone clarify why this is a separate warrant, not just part of the debt line items in the operating budget? Just, just to better understand, because normally, our, our debts are in the treasurer's line item for payments due, or whatever that debt. And so if you could just explain why this is an article?
Is the town accountant here? We'd love for the town accountant to explain that to us.
Jean Joel, 909 Wawonet Road, also the town accountant. It's a separate article, because it was an article originally for the Ruggles Roof Project back in 2012. So in order to close it off of our books, we need to vote, rescind it. What we're doing is rescinding the, the article, and we are going to appropriate the balance to the debt exclusion portion of the principal, which is due this year, next year.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. Article 15, overlay and surplus use.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate, from the Board of Assessors, overlay surplus account, the sum of 2012, the 2,000, uh, 212,690.59 to pay for the deficits in the following grant account. Number one, CARES Act grant, $151,534.59. Number two, sidewalk improvement grant, $41,156. Number three, economic development grant, $10,000. And number four, open space recreation grant, $10,000.
There's a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of Article 15? Mr. Lipson.
Can someone explain how this, how this article came as a deficit? And was there any problem in the, in the previous years, where someone didn't do the accounting properly, where it became a deficit? In other words, from what I'm understanding, is that we're paying for a mistake from the years past.
Recognize Ms. Marshall to answer that question.
I affectionately often call Mr. Lipson our fourth selectman. He's at all of our meetings, and so he knows probably some information about the specific issues. These are deficits from yesteryear, from COVID years. And I know that Tammy, you could give me more specific information on each and every one of them. I know the Budget and Finance Committee has been involved in our review of these. These have been kicking around, and our work with the Department of Revenue, trying to straighten out some things that were left in deficit. This is cleanup, and I'm very proud to say that we have, we're cleaning up some things that are four and five and plus years old. So that being said, good job, Tammy. And we're, I think, completely solvent now on those grant issues that were, you know, kind of sitting around and haven't been addressed.
Would it be fair to say that we expected to get a certain amount on a grant, and then we didn't end up getting as much as we expected?
I, you know, it's before my time, and it's difficult to, you know.
I'm just reading out of the book.
Okay. If you, if you would want to just talk a little bit about that, John?
Yep. So ultimately, what happened, there were a variety of grants during the COVID times, essentially. And what happened was, during some of the transitions through the town with different town administrators, these grants were set up as reimbursable grants. So the money was told we would have, we were able to spend that money, and then the town, us, we, you know, through those transitions, never put in for those reimbursements. So we lost out on those opportunities to have that money reimbursed to us. And some of that was spent, this was all pre-ARPA. So ARPA funding is the American Recovery Act, essentially. These were grants that came before that, or at least, I should say, the, the, the first one on the list is, from before the. Other ones included a sidewalk grant, that was a study for sidewalk up near Quabin. Open Space Recreation was for our Open Space Recreation Plan. And so essentially, there was a breakdown, as we were transitioning between town administrators, where these didn't get paid, or didn't get, reimbursements for them were not submitted. So now, the cost of those fall on us, and the, Tammy has, you know, gone through all of our finances with a very fine-tooth comb, found these, and now we have to address them.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 15? Yes, sir.
Jason Pimental, DPW Superintendent for the town of Barry. So I'm just looking for a little clarification on this. So if you guys can correct me. So these are grants that the town administrator's office put in for, the town accountant's office was aware of, and nobody ever submitted the reimbursement forms to the state or federal government, whoever it was? So the town is just out of this $214,000?
It does sound like that is exactly what happened. Any other discussion on Article 15? Sir?
Dan Anderson, Wawonet Road. Do we know who specifically is responsible for, for getting to recoup $212,000? Thank you.
I think that was actually already answered. It was the previous town administrators, and if anybody has, do you want to give more information than that? Sure. Okay. I recognize our town administrator.
Tammy Martin, town administrator. Do you want my street address?
No, but you can sit closer to the mic.
So what happened was, this is something that's been hanging on for a while. Can you hear me now? So $212,690 was brought to my attention, that the CARES Act, these, and the sidewalk grant, economic development grant, open space grant, we are negative in these amounts, we're deficit. The only way we could go up, or get these, the only way we could go and get these cleared up, was by going to the Board of Assessors and asking them for their abatement and exemption accounts. And we went ahead and asked them, because we have no money, so we had to find funding somewhere, and that's what we did. We went to Select Board, we asked, asked the Board of Assessors if they would allow us to take this money out, so we could clear up these funds. So they agreed to it, and thank you for the Board of Assessors, because they don't have to. And with that being said, if we don't do this, then we will continue to hit deficit over and over and over again. This is something that has gone back. I mean, I know the CARES Act was 2021, but I have ones here from 2014, maybe actually 2019. I have one here from 2018. So these are far back. And I have another one from 2020. So this is something that needs to get cleared up. It's something that we've been working on, and with this, if we don't take care of it, we will continue to hit deficit over and over and over again. With this getting done, we will end up hitting a fresh start. So that's how this all came about. Finally, we came in, I've been working with the accountant's office, and the treasurer, and the assessor's office, and that's how we have to go forward to get this cleared up. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Thank you. Okay, yeah. You can turn that mic back that way.
Hi, Edward Kelly, 685 Gilbert Road. Now, this never ceases to amaze me. I remember previously, we had a tax collector that seemed to embezzle money for years. They ended up going back on the residents of Barry. I knew people that had paid their taxes, they couldn't find receipts. So then the town, in a sense, stole the money from them the second time. Now, this is going back to 2018. There's no accountability, nobody's looking over the shoulders, there's no checks and balances on the individual. I understand that she may have been overworked, she couldn't get to it, maybe she wasn't good at her job. But it seems like there's always a single individual that gets pointed to. But in what department do you run when one individual's responsible for 200 and something thousand this time? I mean, I'm not sure how much money was stolen through the tax office last time, but it just seems like these are pretty large responsibilities that are left unchecked. And I'm just wondering if, when we move forward, is there going to be more accountability? Is somebody going to check the box and review these large accounts that are being spent and collected? Because we can't afford to keep doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on Article 15. All, no, we're moving to a vote now. All those, I said, it just requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please say aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. We already dealt with Articles 16 and 17 under the consent agenda, which brings us to Article 18, resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and so on and so forth.
Mr. Moderator, would you want me to read the entire text of this article?
Do you see the proposed motion in the
I do.
Book? I think it basically says, as written in Article 18, I would, you can read that. And then I'll give everybody a chance to read the text.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to adopt the resolution relative to the improvements to the High Plains Park and the use of grant funds for park and recreational purposes, as printed in Article 18 of the warrant as follows. And I believe this is in their booklet, and that they can take a moment to, to read it. It's basically language that will allow us to apply for grants.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to give everybody a minute just to look over it, so you know what you're going to be voting on.
Two questions. Is two-hundred thousand from ARPA to match a, is there a percentage match requirement for the park grant? And if so, are we certain that federal ARPA can also be used to match this grant?
So yes, two-hundred is from ARPA funds, and those are allowed to be used as a match because this is a state grant, not a federal grant. And the amount that we're seeking to get matched is one-hundred thousand dollars. So essentially, we're trying to turn in two-hundred thousand dollars that we have to expend by the end of the year, well, not expend, we have to dedicate to a project by the end of the year. We are trying to turn that into three-hundred thousand dollars for a better park facility for High Plains Park. But yes, there is a match, and we are entirely certain that ARPA can be used to match this. Mike Pauli Springhill wrote, just in light of the last kind of fiasco, just so I understand, do we like spend the money and then we get the grant, or do we get the grant in and then So two-hundred thousand of it, we already have secured. The other one hundred, that's from the grant. I believe, once we're approved for that, we would have a contract, and then that money would come in for use on that contract.
Any other discussion on Article eighteen? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the article? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The article passes. The motion carries, rather. We already dealt with nineteen, so we can move on to Article twenty, which is regarding
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty.
There's a motion to pass over Article twenty. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second to pass over Article twenty. A motion to pass over is debatable. If anybody has any questions, you can still ask them.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Kane, 760 Williamsville Road. I'd just like to make everybody aware that I've followed this pretty closely, and Selectman Dixon has been close to this, too. But by following the ones that they're working on now, there's been a few cost overruns, and I'm concerned, if we wait too long, we may not secure the funding that we need to do whatever we do with it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to that? Oh, no, just to that.
Hello, Edward Kelly, Gilbert Road. I'm sure a lot of people aren't familiar with this project, but there's a reservoir in between Williamsville Road and Pleasant Street that was previously used for recreation and also to power Allen's Foundry. And it's pretty remote, and I'm sure most people in town are completely unaware of it. But from what I understand of the project, the state has the initiative to remediate, remove what they consider high-hazard dams. So there was a large earthen berm embankment and a concrete spillway. The spillway has been removed, I think in 1990, so the water level has been greatly diminished. My concern is that this seems to be to, this amendment is to secure funding to acquire the land. As far as I understand, land has been defunct. It was a LLC. They can't find any of the surviving members. So right now, the liability is not on the town, and if the town does pursue and acquire the land, then they assume liability. And it just seems like it would make more sense to come up with a solid path as far as the remediation of the dam before you acquire liability for it. And one of the liabilities is the high-hazard classification that the dam currently would have, which it seems like some of the engineering that I've reviewed doesn't make sense to me, is from their assessments of the character of the dam based on wetlands below. But regardless, the high-hazard classification, I feel like, is the sticking point, because then we'd have to spend more money in annual recertification. And I'm sure there's, I'm not a dam engineer, but I'm sure that there are standards that need to be met, and it seems like if we move forward, if we engineer this project to remove it from that high-hazard classification, but also still maintain the topography of water. So I think we're kind of going in the wrong direction. I'm not sure if we need to do this before we pursue engineering, but I would think that we should come up with a path before we accept liability. That seems fairly prudent as far as the overall town goes.
So the motion was to pass over, so it sounds like you're in favor of passing over and not doing this. Is that what you're saying?
That's beyond me. I just think that we need to have more conversation on this, because a lot of people in town are unaware of things that get brought to them. Not saying that you don't do due diligence beforehand, but most time, people show up to town meeting, and this is the first time they've ever heard of it. So I don't want to miss this opportunity to educate people in town that think, why should we have to spend money on something that really doesn't matter? Because this reservoir does matter a lot to the people around, to the environment. So I think there's more to it than a little blurb here, so I might be out of line in my conversation, but I do think it's worth addressing. Thank you.
I don't think it's necessary, I think. So seeing no other hands up, we'll move to a vote. So the motion is simply to pass over and do nothing. Does everyone understand what we're voting on? If you vote yes, we're not going to do fifteen thousand in anything that's written in this book. We're just going to do nothing. All those in favor of the motion to pass over, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article twenty-one is a Department of Public Works special act.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation to reorganize the Department of Public Works as shown in Article twenty-one of the warrant as follows.
So everyone's got the book in front of them? I'm not going to make him read all those words, but I am going to give you time to read those words. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd encourage everyone to read the part labeled description in the booklet, because I think it's a lot easier to understand than the legal wording of the act itself.
Mr. Moderator, first off, I slightly disagree with you. I think that people should read all the wording in there, because there's some really delightful things to read in there. One thing I'd like to touch on is, first of all, this particular article has only been brought to the DPW Commission at its very last meeting. It was briefly talked about a couple months ago, about introducing a road commission, and the Select Board would step away and it'd be a road commission in place. At that time, there was very little information, there was no article written. Nothing was ever brought to the DPW Commission, to myself, or to anybody involved in the After it was brought to our attention, we have since been to multiple meetings to talk about this. I think one of the biggest things that have come out of those meetings that we have talked about is the lack of stability with the Select Board, the town administrator's office, and things like that. I think everybody in this room that has come to multiple town meetings and things like that, they see those seats revolve very frequently. There's, right now, I learned earlier at a meeting that there's an investigation into one of the Selectmen for harassment charges, Mr. Genus. The town administrator has been here five months with no managerial experience. Two articles ago, we saw an article that the town administrator's office missed two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars that they just threw out the window. I think we're putting the town in a situation that is setting them up for failure. This particular act has been in place since 1988, when the sewer system was installed in Berry. The Water Commission has been in place since 1800s. The Water Commission has been in place for the Town of Berry. It all started down with the Berry Wall and South Berry. We have people on those boards and commissions that have been on there for multiple years. We have one commissioner that actually just stopped doing it this past season. He was on there 50 years. So when we talk about stability and people being aware of the projects that go on, and how it takes place, and the steps involved to do it all, I think it's very important that people read all this article. There's also some very strong language in there that puts limitations on myself as far as other job opportunities and things I can do throughout the community. Some of you guys might not be aware, I am a firefighter in Berry as well. This article would take that away, that would no longer be a valid position for me. And again, that's something the town has spent, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars on training me to do that position, and we want to take that away. There's tons of things in there, and those are just little bits and pieces. I was also at those meetings. I asked Mr. Dixon multiple times, multiple questions, to give me one example of how this would benefit the Town of Berry. He has still yet to give me one example that had any factual information to it. The only thing he said was stuff that was hearsay and nothing factual. So just, the townspeople need to know that what this is, is a blind side to the DPW Commission by one or two members of the Select Board. So I think maybe there are changes that maybe need to take place later on, and nobody's saying that they're against that. But if there are changes to take place, it needs to be discussed and figured out what changes need to be taken place, why they need to take place, and how it's going to benefit the Town of Berry.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this article? The Finance Committee isn't going to help here. Yes, I recognize you.
Thank you, Cheryl Southwick, Wawon Road. I would just like to know, out of the blue, why, what hasn't been working that we need to make such a major change? Please tell me what's wrong, what's broken that needs fixing? And I think he just made a good point. If there are little things, then those need to be discussed, but this is kind of a major change. Why?
Can I get an answer to that?
So a big portion of this comes down to some of the flaws just in the structure of a DPW Commission. Essentially, it's creating a department within the town that reports to a commission that's structured to make decisions based on what's best for the department, as opposed to reporting to the town administrator, who is assessing what's best for the town as a whole. It creates personnel that are held accountable to an entirely different structure than other municipal employees in Berry. The problem is, this leaves little to no course of action for resolving conflicts between employees within those different departments. It's hard to give specific examples of that without getting into personnel. You know, unfortunately, some of the examples are not, you know, there are financial controls that the town administrator would like to put in place, that the Select Board would like to put in place across all departments, not just the DPW. And the DPW Commission has the opportunity to just negate those, any of those that come up. There's also outdated information in that, in the existing article. For one thing, it makes it unclear in the existing one if the superintendent can or cannot act as a firefighter, whereas in this one, it specifically gives them the ability to with permission from the Select Board. Whereas in the old one, it's ambiguous if it is or is not, depending on certain grammar aspects of it. So there are flaws within how departments interact, and it creates a different system of accountability. We are trying to bring together the whole Town of Berry for much more significant accountability across all departments. You know, we need more accountability, we need to be pursuing grant funds, and we need to get this town structurally sound.
Thank you. I'm going to wait a second on you, okay?
Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. In reviewing the bylaw as written, I have a couple questions more specific to the bylaw wording itself. Some of it provides powers to the town administrator that don't exist in other places within this town. Specifically, the town administrator, in Section Three, the town administrator in consultation with the Select Board may establish an employment contract. In all other cases, it's the Select Board that enters into a contract with consultation from the town administrator as advisory, because the chairperson of the Select Board is the chief executive officer of the town. They have to sign the contracts. The town administrator does not. The town administrator does not have to sign the police chief's contract or the fire chief's contract, but in this way, you're reversing the roles. Second, when you get into Section Four, you get to a rather lengthy first sentence, but there's a, the fourth line down where it starts with "subject to any policies." This is where it says, "The superintendent shall appoint such subordinate employees as may be necessary to operate the department, subject to any policies, procedures established by town administrator." Again, the town administrator does not create any policies or procedures. The Select Board does, and the town administrator's job is to enforce those. So again, we wrote this in a way that we're ascribing certain powers that don't exist elsewhere in the town departments. I think more clarity and more review of this as to consistency throughout really needs to be done before we move forward with any vote on this. really needs to be done before we move forward with any vote on this.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm recognizing the superintendent.
Mr. Moderator. Just to touch on a couple of things that John had said. John can't give any examples, because there are no examples. The select board has not ever asked anything of the DPW Commission that they have said no to. So if they have anything that they're worried about, policies put in place, whatever they want to put in place, they can ask the DPW Commission, and I've never seen them, our departments, ever not work together. The three selectmen are part of our board. They can bring anything to the attention of the board anytime they would like. Yeah, I guess that's it for now.
Dr. Marshall?
I was the selectman in opposition to this particular effort. And I only say that because if you read carefully the stuff that is recommended here, I view that as sort of a grab of the selectmen to wrestle down the commission. I look at my position as one that I'm elected by the same people who elected the Sewer Commission, by the same people who elected the Water Commission. And in order to make these adjustments, some of which might be really useful and helpful, we should do together after, you know, a study that we can work through all of the different language and at this time next year, potentially bring you back a well-studied, thoughtful response to some of the concerns that John has that are legitimate. I don't say that they're not legitimate. I think we have issues that we'd love to get better at, and I just feel that all that... As I think the DPW Superintendent pointed out, we really haven't had a lot of conversation about this. And this is a big deal. This is a big change in the way we operate. Not that maybe some of it wouldn't be useful, but I don't think we've studied it enough, and I don't think it has the legs to stand the test of time.
Thank you. Any other comments on Article 21? Seeing none... Oh, now I see one. Let's have this be the last one.
All right. Well, thank you all for the opportunity to speak about this. I do believe it's an important article for the people of Town of Barry to have an opportunity to consider. I believe that our DPW structure, which utilizes the DPW Commission, is deeply flawed, and it's not the best option for the Town of Barry. What Article 21 proposes is an alternative. Barry currently has a DPW structure that Town Council described as unusual, if not unique, at the Warren Public Hearing. The current structure consists of the nine DPW commissioners that are made up of three component commissions, the Sewer, Water, and Select Board. The DPW director reports to that commission, just to give some background on it, which is responsible for the oversight of DPW. What is proposed in Article 21 is that the DPW Commission would be abolished with some of the commission's authority going to the superintendent and some going to the Town Administrator. It is important to note, though, that this does not change in any way the function of the Sewer and the Water Commissions. And all elected officials in them would maintain their positions on those commissions. It's just the responsibilities that were held by the DPW Commission which exist when all of the component commissions are combined together that will be changed. The system we have now is complicated. In fact, every so often, Town Council has to go to the DPW Commission meeting to explain what the DPW Commission is supposed to be doing. The system Article 21 proposes is a simplified one, where the DPW Superintendent now would report to the Town Administrator just like every other department head in town, just like the police chief, fire chief, town accountant, assessor, and senior center directors do. This is common practice in most towns. The structure of Article 21 is not new. In the last 10 years, every town in Massachusetts that reorganized or confirmed their DPW structure used a structure like Article 21 and hasn't opted for a DPW Commission. All of them in the last 10 years. The Sewer Commission, Water Commission, and Select Board, or Road Commission, if established, would still authorize projects in their respective areas, but from a personnel perspective, the DPW Superintendent would report to the Town Administrator. Just as the Town Assessor takes direction from the Board of Assessors, the senior center director takes direction from the Council on Aging, but both still report to and are accountable to the Town Administrator. As we look to provide stronger financial controls, additional accountability over every department to best serve the taxpayers of Barry, we need a consistent structure of accountability through all departments in town, and this article is a critical step to creating that consistency.
Thank you. Looks like there is more discussion.
Mr. Moderator. Again, to touch base on what John said. If you do read this, it does take all of the oversight and stability that I spoke of earlier from the different commissions, and it puts it in the hands of the Town Administrator's Office. The DPW Commission, the first time they heard about this, seven days ago, they made a vote to, you know, they were unfavorable that they thought this should be a tabled action, that it was never even brought to their attention and never even talked about with them. I think what's happening here is we have people that have gone out on a limb. I pay attention to a lot of the select board meetings, and I've never seen this even talked about at a selectman's meeting for them to give one of the members authorization to go out and put this all together. I guess a couple of questions I would like to ask is, how much did the select board spend with legal counsel on this article without ever talking about it in a meeting and authorizing it? If we look at the line items from last fiscal year, legal is one of the things that we are astronomically overspent. Another thing I'd like to point out is John spoke of all these departments that the Town Administrator's Office oversees now. Again, if we look through the articles in this book, a lot, all of the large departments that the Town Administrator's Office oversees now and the select board have overspent their budgets. I would also like to say that, being under the DPW Commission, we have not overspent our budget. The only thing we overspend is snow and ice, and that's because they don't let us put a real number in there. Because once it goes up, it can never go back down. So there's a lot of things in there that, you know, John is saying that is, again, false information. So I urge everybody to read that, and I think if there are changes that need to be made, you know, it can be talked about. But I think taking the stability out of the largest department in the Town of Barry and putting it in the hands of a department that has more turnover than I've ever seen. Tammy is my 10th Town Administrator that I've worked for. I've been here 15 years running the DPW for the Town of Barry. Our budget's been level funded, except for items that obviously cost more, for 15 years since I've been here. And we still get everything done that we need to get done. I'm lucky I have a great group of people that work for me. Unfortunately, they're dwindling fast because of things like this that scare me away from working in Town of Barry. So I would just urge the people to think about this. I think it's a very bad idea. I think putting all the power in one person's hands instead of nine people, having that person have the right to dictate what I do instead of the people that know what the sewer system needs me to do, what the water system needs me to do, and what the highway system needs me to do. I think it's all, it's all bad. I think there are changes that maybe need to be made. I don't see how anything in this article changes the town for the better, and I still have not been given an example of how it does.
Thank you. The man in the ball cap?
Thanks again, Mr. Moderator. I was just hoping to speak to you guys about my experience with the DPW. There were two times I needed to go see them. One time was because I kind of keep an eye on the open space and conservation land that Barry owns. Well, our rocking stone had a pine tree, probably a 70-footer. And I had went down and discussed that with Jason's office, and he, at that point, told me as soon as he gets the bucket truck that goes around from town to town, he'll take care of it. And sure enough, he was right. The tree was full of ants, and it was going to go. He's the tree warden. He knows those things. The second time, I had one in front of my property. It was a probably 200-year-old maple, one of our historical trees. It was on my side, but I still wanted to ask the town because of its historical significance, being an old-growth tree. He checked with the arborists from... He went through National Grid first, and their arborists come up and took a look, and they all agreed that the tree should go, and I had to get rid of it. Those are my two experiences with the DPW, just the way it's operating now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lipson?
You know, I'm not here to say there's anything wrong with the DPW. I think they're doing one hell of a job. However, there are some issues. There's an issue between the DPW and the selectmen, and it's been a forever power struggle, even on the simplest things. So we're talking about accountability. There's no accountability from the DPW. And I went out to some of my fellow townspeople, and one of them's name is Doug Martin, and a lot of you folks know who he is. And he writes well, and he speaks well, and he has a passion for this town. And his spouse is here today.
Sam, you can't read a statement from another citizen at town meeting, because the town meeting has no way of knowing what that person said to you or cross-examining, asking them questions. So why don't you skip... If you're going to quote him, I think you need to skip that.
Is it possible that I can say those are my words?
You should say yes. You can certainly do that.
Okay, these are my words. So, and I... The Town of Barry government lacks the overall personnel accountability that is a necessary component of good management. This is not the fault of any individual or individuals who are or were involved in town government, but is the result of many years of previous practices that have eroded accountability. And I'm going to represent the last couple of items where it cost us $212,000 because of an accountability problem. Every employee of the town government should report directly to the Town Administrator or to a manager or supervisor or department head who in turn reports to the Town Administrator. I believe that in eliminating the DPW Commission and having the DPW staff report directly to the Town Administrator is a good first start in helping to restore accountability. And with these words, I'm asking that we have a secret ballot.
Okay. So here's how a secret ballot... No. There's been a motion for a secret ballot. So Barry has a peculiar bylaw that regards secret ballots that's different than what you would find in Robert's Rules or Town Meeting Time. We follow Town Meeting Time. So in Barry, a motion for a secret ballot cannot be debated, which means we're going to vote on this. I can explain things to you. You could ask me a question, logistical things, but...
Nobody seconded that.
I know. So I'm just explaining what the rules are. So there'd be a motion. There would have to be a second on that. And then there would be a vote on whether we should have a secret ballot, and it would be a 10% threshold in order to have a secret ballot, which isn't a lot, but it's, you know... So it's less than a majority, but it's got to be a bunch. So there's a motion been made for a secret ballot. Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second for a secret ballot. We're not going to debate it, but if anybody doesn't understand what we're talking about... So there's, if 10% of you vote yes, we will have a secret ballot. We'll go back to debating the item, and then when it's time to vote, there'll be a process where you come up, and Ellen will explain it to you, and you'll put ballots in a ballot box, and nobody will know how you voted. So all those in favor of having a secret ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Since it's a 10% threshold and it's kind of impossible to do that with a voice vote unless it was like one to everybody, I'm going to need to use... Let's go to hands, and I'll see if I can get it that way. All those in favor of having a secret ballot, please raise your hands. You can put them down. 30 of you voted yes. There are not 300 people in the room, so it's going to pass. So all those opposed, raise your hands. Considerably less than 290. So we will be having a secret ballot when it comes time to vote on this article. Mr.... Yes, Urban.
Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. Another thing that built into this, I think, potentially is an unforeseen conflict we can be putting the superintendent in. For example, a Water Commission may vote to ask or approve for him to do certain actions for the Water Department. And if the Town Administrator then says no, who does that superintendent answer to? And are they subject to being fired if they follow the elected board over the Town Administrator? So this is a... You're going to put your superintendent in a spot where they no longer actually have to answer to the elected officials?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So under the proposed act, the Sewer Commission, the Water Commission, and then either the Select Board or Road Commission, if one were established, would dictate what projects are pursued, and then the personnel would report to the Town Administrator. So it's the same process that you see for the assessor in town who, you know, takes direction from the Board of Assessors but reports to the Town Administrator, for the director of the... Sorry, the senior center, who takes direction from the Council on Aging but reports to the Town Administrator who provides the proper oversight.
Yep, one more.
Mr. Moderator. I think we're getting slightly off track. So one part that we're missing and we talk about this oversight in the select board. The select board oversees the Town Administrator. The Town Administrator has no authority to make any decisions in the Town of Barry without the authorization of the select board. The select board is already part of the DPW Commission. They, the all three selectmen, are part of the DPW Commission. They already have an oversight to myself and to the employees of the DPW. I believe this government structure that John keeps looking forward into would put us in more of a town manager perspective. John came up here earlier and had a list of towns. All those towns that did the road commission thing, most of them don't have water and sewer. The ones that do, they have town managers. So if the Town of Barry wants to change its former government to a town manager, we need to hire a town manager that has managerial experience, that can oversee every department in the Town of Barry. We already... I can't stress this enough. A few articles ago, the Town Administrator's Office and the Select Board threw $214,000, $214,000 out the window. So is that honestly the people that change all the time you want overseeing the largest department in the Town of Barry? I think we're getting way off track, and we're talking about stuff that doesn't even matter. With this article, we're putting the town in a more dangerous position.
I'm hearing the same arguments made over and over again. So if somebody has something completely different that they want to inject in this... Yeah, let's hear from somebody on the Finance Committee. Let's do that.
Corey Lumbrady, Wall-Winnett-Road. I don't think we've heard enough from either side to know whether or not this is a good idea. Can I make an amendment to form a committee to report back? Can I make an amendment to form a committee to report back at one year at a town meeting?
Kind of. That wouldn't be an amendment. So, you can make a motion to refer to committee.
Okay. I would make a motion to refer to committee.
And then you can identify what committee you want to refer it to. And your choices are any committee that already exists in town or one which is appointed by the moderator or one which is selected by the town meeting members.
One selected by the town meeting members to review this for a period of a year and make a report at town meeting next year and go from there. It could benefit the town, or it could hurt the town. We don't know.
Okay, there's a motion to refer to committee. Hang on one second. We don't get those very often around here. Yeah. Simple majority. It's debatable. It's amendable. So, there's a motion to refer to a committee established by town meeting. Is there a second on that motion? I have a motion and a second to refer to committee. Is there any discussion? For example, would people like to make nominations of people to be on that committee? Yes?
I would nominate the whole select board, the member of the sewer committee, the water committee... I'm from Worcester, I apologize. And the town administrator to be on the committee.
I think you just nominated the DPW commission.
Pretty much.
So, a nomination of the DPW commission plus the town administrator to be on a study committee. Let's have a vote on that. All in favor of that set of appointments for this committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That didn't carry. So, we don't have anybody on the committee yet. Any other... Mr. Lipson?
I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves at this point, and we've missed one most important person. We have the town administrator, who is hopefully going to be here for many, many years, and maybe she can put a light and explain to all of us citizens the importance of this change. Thank you.
Do you want to do that? You don't have to. No. We're debating a motion to defer to committee, although we don't have a committee yet.
Jim Caruso, South Street, Barry. I've just got on the DPW committee. This is not necessary. This is a bunch of crap. It's as simple as that. Okay, give us time to actually do the work and not bat heads with certain selectmen, and we'll get the job done. It's as simple. You're going to hire the same people that run the DPW. You've got your water, your sewer, your DPW guys, and you've got your selectmen. Hire more people to do the same thing? I say we make a motion to put this for a vote. Anybody second?
You don't get to do that. So, yes, I think what you're trying to do is to move the question. But what you... The question you can move right now is the one on the... The motion on the floor, which is to refer this to committee. You could do that, so let's... I'm going to interpret your motion as to that. All of those in favor of voting right now without any further discussion on moving this to committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That didn't pass either. So, we still don't have a committee, and we haven't yet voted on whether to refer this to committee. If it's going to fail, it probably doesn't matter if we have one. Do you have a comment that's different than what we've talked about before that has something to do with referring this to committee?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we table the motion to move it to committee. Can we do that?
No, actually, you can't. I find that out of order. Yes, sir.
Mark Carlson, Broad Street. I feel if we're going to make a committee, it should be people that are not employed by the town. It should be individuals that have an outside view of it.
That's great, and that's pretty much what was suggested, except I didn't hear any nominations. Still interested in nominations for this committee. Yes, sir.
I nominate that dude.
Can that dude identify himself? What was your name? We don't need a second on nominations. Mark Carlson. Any other nominations for a committee to refer this to? Mr. Lipson?
I would like to nominate Richard Stevens.
Richard Stevens? This is why it's important to come to town meeting? Oh, good. Any other nominations for this committee? Do you have a nomination?
Yeah.
It's also okay to nominate yourself.
I nominate Michael Kowal and Ray Balzner, the second.
Got four? Yes, sir.
I'd also like to nominate Warren Clark, Robbie Barnes, and Corey Bombardi.
Are you getting these right? Can you repeat those three, please? Warren Clark. Robbie what?
Barnes.
And? Yes, sir.
I feel with Jay making all the seven, six, seven recommendations, he's kind of trying to stack the commission in his favor, where they're all his recommendations. And Mike Cole, I know is a town employee. He works for the, I believe, ambulance department.
Mr. Lipson?
Is it permissible to nominate someone who has worked for this town, who currently does not... Who does not live in this town, but is significantly experienced in town operations?
You can nominate the President of the United States if you want to. We're just writing the names down.
Oh, no, I don't want to nominate the President of the United States, thank you. Clearly, we would be in worse shape. I would... If he's allowed... If he's willing... His name is Greg Belukonis, and he was a... He is a very sage, educated, experienced town administrator, and he would add much to this discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes?
Mr. Moderator, just to have some clarification. The people that I nominated to the committee are business owners in towns that are very educated and very smart about running different things. I nominated Mr. Bombardi because he's a member of the finance committee. He also deals with different DPW unions, and he was the one that wanted this, so I feel he should have to be involved in it. And is there any way I can get this moving along here?
Yes. So, I think we have enough names that we have a committee. So, we have a motion on the floor to refer to a committee of these nominated people, and I'm going to bundle that up. You're going to vote on this set of nominations and whether we should do this referring to committee. What happens if you refer to committee is we stop talking. So, it's an interesting question, because there was already a motion for a secret ballot. And the question of whether the secret ballot would apply, I would say it doesn't. If somebody wanted this to be a secret ballot, I think we'd need a new motion for a secret ballot. So, not hearing that, I think we're going to... We're simply going to vote on the motion to refer to committee, and that committee consists of... And I'm sorry if I didn't get these names exactly right. Ellen's much better at this than I am. Mark Carlson, Richard Stevens, Michael Kowal, Ray Balzner, the second, Warren Clark, Robbie Barnes, Corey Bombardi, and Gray Belukonis.
Belukonis.
Belukonis. So, we have a motion to refer to a committee of these people to study and report back at the next town meeting. All those in favor of referring to committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. Give me a minute. You can lower them. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Yeah. Yeah. If it was close, we'd go to actual tellers, but it's not close. The motion does not carry, so we're not referring this to committee. So, the next thing that happens is we can keep talking about this, or we can go to a secret ballot vote on whether we want to do this or not. There's no need, because there's no more debates. So, we will proceed to the vote, and I'm going to hand over... Just so everyone understands what we're voting on. So, this is Article 21, Department of Public Works Special Act. So, if you're voting yes, you want to change the way that the whole DPW department works and who the director does. If you vote no, we leave everything the way it is right now. All right? So, Ellen's going to explain to you how you vote.
Okay, so what we're going to do is everybody should have gotten one of these when they checked in. We're going to be using the yellow yes/no slip for this vote. And I'm going to ask Paula and Kay to come forward. And what we'll be doing is everyone will be taking their yellow yes/no slip. You'll be taking the vote of your choice, tearing it in half. We'll do it by rows. You'll come up... There's two boxes up here in the front. You'll be depositing your vote into one of the boxes, and you'll be taking the other half of your vote, crumpling it up, and throwing it in the trash. We're going to have everybody come up to the center aisle. You'll be exiting on the side aisles and returning back to your seats. And we're going to start with...
What does "yes" mean and what does "no" mean?
A yes vote.
If you vote yes, and you want to... That means you want to completely change the way things work. You want to adopt this article. If you vote no, you want to leave things the way they are.
And the way we're going to start it off is, first of all, is there anybody that doesn't feel that they can walk up front to put in the vote? You need the box brought to you. And just raise your hand if there's anybody. Okay. So, we're going to start... I'm going to have the finance committee table, if you guys want to vote, and the select board table, if you guys want to vote, and my election workers in the back, if you want to come up and cash your ballots first. Once you deposit your vote into the box, your right hand will be stamped so that we know that you've already voted. Marian, if you want to vote, you can go down. And then I'm going to have the first five rows on both sides form two lines. Everybody on this side will go to the ballot box on their side, and everyone on the left will go to the left side. And the next few rows can fall in behind. And the next few rows can fall in behind.
We're moving on to Article 22, the last article in the warrant regarding a road commission by law.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 22.
There's a motion to pass over Article 22. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to pass over Article 22. Is there any discussion of that? All those in favor of passing over Article 22 and taking no action on it, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. I have a motion to dissolve the meeting. I have a second. All in favor of dissolving the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.